Start our council briefings. And, you know, the first thing we're going to talk about is unfunded pension liabilities.
Let's see, you want to go ahead and introduce Davenport?
Good afternoon, counsel.
Hello, how are you?
Today, we're going to have a short presentation on unfunded pensions liabilities. And I've brought in Davenport and Company to do the presentation. So I'm going to turn it over now to David Rose.
Before we get started, Mr. Palucci will not be joining us today. He's feeling ill, but he'll be watching us on TV. So smile a lot. Thank you very much.
Think that'll make him feel better?
Yeah, oh, good idea. It'll make me feel better, you know. Here we go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel. I'm David Rose, and I am the managing partner at Davenport out of Richmond. And as you know, we are of the good fortune of being a member of your community. We have offices here. But my partner Roland Cooch and I come out of the Richmond office. So again, we appreciate it. I do have hard copies of this, if anyone in the audience, as well as this counsel would like to see that.
I would, because I have trouble hearing. Thank you.
While they're being distributed, I will be about 10 or 15 minutes. And by all means, feel free to interrupt me. I will do the presentation, and my partner Roland and I will try to answer any questions or take any notes if there's some things that you'd like us to try to address that we don't have or don't know the answers to. So we will try that. Okay? All right, does everyone have a copy? Just, all right. Again, thank you for having us. On this introduction here, we were asked by the city management to come today and give a little brief overview as it relates to the pensions. We'd like to do that. And just by way of introduction, since this is my first time in front of this august body, we are, as I said, with Davenport and Company. This is my 25th year at Davenport, which, given the fact we're 160 years old, makes me a newcomer. But hopefully, I'll be there for the long haul. That said, I'm delighted to say we serve basically two out of every three local governments, both in Hampton Roads and statewide. It is the largest practice. I'd like to think if we're the largest, maybe we're doing something right. We have had the opportunity, in fact, historically, we are the financial advisor to the City of Cincinnati, where Mr. Duhany came from, as well as some of your other assistant managers. We represented them as well. And Ms. Shelton, when she was at the City of Richmond, worked with her. So with that said, enough about this introduction. We'd like to talk a little bit about your credit standing and long-term liabilities. So if you would, Roland, just go to the next page. Just want to give you a sense of the sources that we used. We have publicly available information. We had the opportunity to talk to national rating agencies, which there are three, basically, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch, all of which you enjoy the highest rating category of AAA. In addition, we talked to certain key stakeholders here at the City of Virginia Beach, but by no means did a thoroughly exhaustive review. But again, I think we did enough, hopefully, to give you some sense of how we look at this as reasonable financial folks, especially for yours truly after some 40 years. Okay. So the purpose of our briefing, we wanted to provide some perspective, as we say, on how independent, industry-recognized, and accredited experts view the city's liabilities. I can tell you right now, the sky is not falling, not even close to it. And again, we hear it, we've seen things on the Internet, we've seen some discussions, we see facts that, like anything else, are taken out of context, overblown, it's only certain facts. It's no different than just reading one side of a ledger. You've got to look at the full picture. And when you do that, we will be able to talk about your pension levels. We have to also look at the overall city and its wherewithal to take care of these pension levels, not just now, but in the future. And as a result of that, one of the critical things we have to look at, and we do, is, is the City of Virginia Beach structurally balanced? And does it have substantial available reserves in the event of some very bad things happening? The answer's in both cases is an affirmative yes. The city is in very good standing. It's not a mistake that all three agencies have you at AAA and talk about your level of liabilities as being very solid, modest, and affordable. So again, it's not just yours truly talking, it's others that look at many local governments, thousands of them, if you will, as well as states. So the next page, simply there, shows what the various, they're all called AAA. Moody's happens to show it a certain way by one large A and two small As, but S&amp;P and Fitch do it the same way, all big uppercase As. And that is the best you can get. You can go down about eight or nine notches before you even get to non-investment grade. So again, that is where you are, that's where you're perched. And it's not just based upon one factor. But if you look at it, you go to the next page, right there, it's actually based upon a holistic series of criteria. And I would argue that when you look at your pensions, when you look at your liabilities, the reason why the rating agencies don't just say, well, if you've got a lot of debt, you'll have a low credit rating, or you have no debt, you'll have a high credit rating, that's not how they look at it. They look at it and say, okay, what are the drivers to providing you the ability to pay for these liabilities? And what you'll notice there is that the 80% of what the drivers are, are economics and tax base. Because let's face it, if you owe a dollar, but you only are bringing in a half a dollar, you can't afford it. That's not the case for Virginia Beach. Your finances, that means, are you structurally balanced? And the answer is yes. And then finally, management, and you are actually considered management, because you dictate to the manager, and he in turn works with you to implement policies that are what they call management. And they put all those together in a basket, and that's 80% of a credit rating. And then lastly, the debt, the pensions, and the OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits, that makes up just one-fifth of the overall criteria of the rating. So we'll talk about that in a moment or two, but I just wanted to put that as a backdrop. Okay. All right. So let's talk a little bit about your observations with regard to the city's long-term liabilities. All right, the overwhelming majority of localities and school boards here in the Commonwealth are in the Virginia retirement system. The Virginia retirement system has been around, basically, since the early 1940s, basically 1944 through 1946, when it really got going. So just in the thick of the war years. You enjoy that AAA rating. And again, one of those key factors is that it is viewed that you have adequate pension and other long-term liability funding levels. So when you look at that, you consistently meet and satisfy the actuarially determined contribution. That's a fancy way of saying, the state sends you a bill every year and says, to take care of your obligations in VRS, we want X dollars. To give you a sense of that, that basically was about, I'm rounding off here, about $115, $116 million just a year or so ago. You've been doing that. A good portion of that is for your workers that are part of the city side, and the other part is for the school side. And so again, you're doing what they ask you to do. And as a result, the state in turn, or the Commonwealth in turn, in getting those dollars and keeping the VRS at the levels that the rating agencies expect are one of only 11 local, one of 11 states in the country to be AAA as well. So they're doing what they're supposed to do. Now, having said that, they haven't always done what they're supposed to do. The state has been in a mode several years ago where they got lax, where they got behind as it relates to taking care of some funding. When the rating agencies told the state that you're at some risk of keeping your AAA, they did ultimately move that up. They also then turned around, as you know, many of you know, and they asked you, you the local governments, to increase your contributions, and you all did that. When I say you, meaning Virginia Beaches, Hamptons, et cetera, all did that. And so as again, you've moved back into a comfort level mode for the rating agencies that the state has now, once again, clearly put themselves in a very strong overall position. Okay, next page. You are contractually required to make this payment, as I called it. And in reality, it's three pieces of payments. It is the city actuarially part, that's the dark green. It's the schools professional part, that's the blue. And then you can see that lighter green is the school non-professional part, that's sort of small little band. You'll notice here, in every single year, that is right there where that gold line is. And that gold line is what the state tells you, the Commonwealth, you need to provide them. Now, what they in turn do, how do they come up with that? What they do is they have annually, actuarially, review it, and they say, okay, what is it that we think is necessary contribution, knowing that there's constantly changing assumptions, whether it's mortality rates, whether it's benefit changes, whether it's the discount rate, which is what the assumption that the state VRS uses on average over 30-year period, all those factors. And every year, this changes. So that's why your numbers go up every year, as things grow, as the city grows, as the state grows, as again, inflation grows, as employment payments grow, all these continue to grow. And so it's like anything else. What was a dollar years ago, today is $2, and what have you, all because things to grow. And so does these dollars and the contributions. But what is critical, if you go to the next page, is that this overall retirement system is actually viewed as being very healthy. Is it fully funded? Is it perfect if all of a sudden tomorrow, everybody retired? Well, the answer is not everybody's going to retire tomorrow. Doesn't have enough money for everybody to retire tomorrow. But if you look at it over the period of 20 to 30 years or thereabouts, the dollars and the reinvestment are basically adequate from VRS's perspective and adequate from the rating agency's perspective. So for example, this past year, the stock market, let's use that as a proxy, not everything that the VRS is in is stocks, but the stock market went up around 25%, 27%. Right now, we're four or five months into the new year, it's down 20%. So you have these movements in any given year. That'll affect what they turn around and say to you next year that they want for subsequent years. The point, though, that we look at is, okay, how much of what they're asking you to contribute is part of your overall budget? Okay. So let's go to the next page. I promise I'm almost done. All right. So what you'll find is, for the moment, 80% funding, meaning trying to prove that your 80% is considered best practices. Your city pension as part of that VRS, of what you're giving them, was slightly below that. And the schools, those school pieces, were slightly above. So again, this is dictated by what the VRS asks you to do. Give you a sense of that, in 2020, fiscal year 2020, just take a couple of years from the audit we had, all of that $116 million that I alluded to, on a $1.5 billion operating revenues, was 7.5 cents of every dollar of your operating revenues. Let me give you a sense of that. If you're fortunate to have a mortgage, think of it that way. A mortgage is really no different, in a lot of ways, than a pension, because you owe these dollars every year, over 30 years, to keep that house. In reality, they basically say, we don't like you to be above about 25% to 28% of your income or revenues to take care of a mortgage and those costs. In your instance, your total liabilities as the City of Virginia Beach is 7.5%. That includes your pensions, your OPEB, and all the debt that you incur and have incurred, and which you have basically about $1 billion of debt outstanding, not talking about enterprise funds, that's separate and apart, but this is your general charter bonds, public revenue bonds. So that all told only comes to, as they say, only about 7.5 cents on every dollar. So from that perspective, while we may wish it was 6.5 cents or 5.5 cents, that is considered very, very strong. That translates, when the rating agencies gave the report, and Moody's, the latest report here, they say that when they put all those together, this basically is a very strong credit strain. It is a big credit strain for the city. So I wanted to share that with y'all and let you see that. Okay, let's go to page 10. Those are just the quotes by the rating agencies. I think you can read them all, but it says, let's say, just the one, S&amp;P, "The rating reflects city's strong debt and contingent liability profile. We do not view pension and other post-employment benefits as an immediate credit pressure, because required contributions make up a relatively small portion of total government expenditures." Again, sky is not falling. We read about it in the Internet. It is bizarre after 40 years. It's just interesting, but that's the way it is. All right, last page, and I'll be done. With all of this said, what's critical is that the city has adequate cash flow and key reserves. And in that regard, you had at the end of FY '21, about $110 million of emergency cash flow. That, to give you a sense of, when you think about it, your dollars that you gave in last year with regard to just the side of the city side, or 2020, I should say, was about $48 million. So you have right there, in an apocalyptic environment, and I mean really, it would be bad, lots of other bad things would happen, you literally have two years of dollars sitting there, and they'd be needed for lots of other things. But you've got like two years alone in just one little pot of money if all of a sudden everything went to heck in a handbasket. So in my 40 years doing this, I think I would say to the City of Virginia Beach, you can rest easy, the citizens can rest easy, that you're doing the right things, as long as you continue to follow your financial policies, and as long as you listen to other outsiders like these rating agencies that are not located here, don't have offices here, don't pay taxes here, and don't care about you. Frankly, all they want to do is tell you, this is how we look versus others. And I point out that I could remember back in 2010, when the financial crisis occurred, what we found about the rating agencies was, when it came to the corporate world, they were pretty incorrect. They had some things at AAA in the corporate world, they couldn't have been more off when it came to mortgages and all those things. But the interesting thing was, their other separate division, the one that covers all these places, cities and counties, they were dead on. And as a result, today, the rating agencies are even more important with regard to local governments, municipalities, than they were even a decade or 12 or 13 years ago. With that, happy to answer any questions. I don't pretend to have them all, Mr. Mayor, and Roland can maybe talk, and thank you.
Any questions?
A good news report.
Okay, good. John?
I was going to say, they were here early, so was I, and I had all my questions answered before we started.
Oh, good. Way to, that's all doing your homework, John.
And I appreciate that very much.
Well, the first thing Mr. Moss said to me is, I said, we're here early, and he said, you're on time. Which is, so we're here, so I thank you. I figured out, you have to get it pretty early.
Yeah, sometimes that's a challenge with me, but then I admit it. What could I tell you? All right, but listen, thanks a bunch for everybody, and I'll tell you what, kudos over a long time to, you know, not only the counsel, but to management for, you know, all things considered, making it through the COVID, you know, and I'll say this, and I'll say it again, I think we made it through the COVID better than any city I'm aware of. And, you know, the future's going to be bright because of, you know, what we've done. And John, I think the storm order referendum is going to help, you know, our posture and everything, so really appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you all very much. Be well. Thank you.
All right, and next up is the proposed amendment to the noise ordinance.
It's been a while since I got to stand at a podium, you know, and I kind of miss it. So if I begin with, may it please the court, just know that I'm reverting back to a former Well, good afternoon, the mayor, vice mayor, members of counsel. In 2009, the city adopted its current version of the noise ordinance after the Virginia Supreme Court declared the prior version of our ordinance unconstitutionally vague. That ordinance prohibited, among other things, unnecessarily loud and disturbing sound, and then went on to provide several definitions of what might constitute unnecessarily loud or unreasonably loud and disturbing sound. But the court said, that's a subjective standard in our view, and therefore, under the First Amendment, it is not passable. So in response to that, the counsel adopted a noise ordinance that relies heavily on sound pressure levels measured by noise meters. While that system is clearly objective, it is not particularly practical or workable. If you can't prove a violation except by a noise meter, then every time there's a call for loud noise, you have to dispatch an officer who has a noise meter and who has been trained to use it. And that noise meter has to be used in a specific place, under specific conditions. And what we found out is, over the last 12 years, it just doesn't work. I'm not aware of a single successful prosecution of a noise ordinance violation. Now, that's not to say we don't do a good job, and our police department doesn't do a good job of getting voluntary compliance when they go out there and talk about enforcing the noise ordinance. I think that happens probably more than it doesn't. But in problem cases, in troublesome situations, where you actually have to go to enforcement, the current ordinance is just not getting the job done. And we have had, and I know you all are aware, we have had numerous citizens and businesses come to us and say, or come to you, and you have come to me, to say, what can we do about this? This is not working. in response to that, we went about trying to address those concerns, and we identified a couple of key areas where revisions could be helpful. One is streamlining that enforcement, so that we're not so reliant upon these sound meters and sound pressure levels. Another problem that we noticed is, even when we did get those readings, when we got to court, judges don't like to give somebody a criminal record over something that they see as potentially insignificant. And if you think about it, our judges see assaults, batteries, domestic abuse, murder, rape, robbery. When they then see the noise case, they say, gee, I really hate to give somebody a criminal record because of a noise violation. Now, they do, they're very good about doing the duty that they're sworn to do, but it's an impediment. And combine that with the fact that to convict somebody of a criminal violation, you have to prove that violation beyond a reasonable doubt. If there's any reasonable doubt, the case must be dismissed when it is a criminal charge. By contrast, when you bring forward a civil penalty, or a violation that has a civil penalty, it's governed by the civil standard, and the civil burden of proof is only by a preponderance of the evidence. In other words, if it's more likely than not that the violation was committed, then it is appropriate to find, make a finding against the defendant and impose the required civil penalty. So we looked at going to something other than using noise meters, and we looked at establishing a different penalty structure. the manager and I put together a team consisting of representatives from his office and mine, from the resort management office, and from the police department. And we had the assistance of the two liaisons, Mr. Moss and Mr. Tower. And we did quite a bit of work, and a lot of this work was done by public safety attorney, Jessica Kep, who I hope is here. And we looked basically across the state to see what other jurisdictions were doing. What we found, somewhat ironically, is that a lot of localities, especially the smaller ones, still have the noise ordinance that was struck down in Tanner versus City of Virginia Beach. And what Mr. Tower just sent me a news article last week, where one Virginia jurisdiction is now about to adopt the ordinance that I'm telling you, we've never convicted anybody under. But we do see some other noise ordinances that are a little more innovative, and we have tried to take some of the best out of all of those ordinances and bring them forward to you. What we've tried to do is come up with an ordinance that has an objective standard, because objectivity versus subjectivity is key in enforceability, and also is content neutral, so that we can avoid some of the pitfalls that come under the First Amendment. This is, and I sent to you all, and I have, I put a copy around earlier of the draft ordinance. There are seven sections in the ordinance, the first of which is definitions. The two most, well, I'm not going to say interesting, but the two operative sections that define the violations are Sections 2366 and Sections 2367. And I'll talk about those a little bit more in a moment. But I do want to call your attention to 2365, because this does, excuse me, add another, is another change that I think is significant enough to mention. That's on enforcement and whose duty it is to enforce. And you'll see in lines 120 through 122, that while the police department has primary enforcement authority, they may be assisted by other city personnel as directed by the city manager. And so that is to say that employees or personnel from other city departments can also be brought into the enforcement network, which makes potentially enforcement more responsive. And so I wanted to point that out. I also want to point out Section 2370, which are the exceptions. This is substantially similar to what the current exceptions are under the current ordinance, but it includes things, for example, emergency warning sounds that may violate the ordinance if it's a true emergency, permitted, city permitted and sponsored events, you can get a, you know, a special events permit, and that will take you out of the scope of the ordinance. So let's talk about some of the key changes, and these are going to deal initially primarily with 2367 and 2368. 2367 is the introduction of the plainly audible standard. Now, again, what we have today is, you have to have a certain, you have to have noise that violates a certain sound level decibel reading in a certain place at a certain time. Instead of having a certain number of decibels, here we go with, is the noise plainly audible at a defined place and/or time? And I'm going to give you some examples of that. And I'm gonna give you some examples of that. What does plainly audible mean? For purposes of this proposed ordinance, plainly audible means just exactly what it says. Any sound that can be heard by the human ear with or without a medically approved hearing aid or device. To be plainly audible, you do not have to be able to understand specific words or phrases. Something can be plainly audible even if you can't hear the higher pitched sound levels. If all you can hear is that heavy bass thump, that is sufficient to qualify as plainly audible. The only restriction is, you must be able to hear it, and you must be, it must be loud enough that you are able to identify its source. So let's, let's talk a little bit about, let me go up to this one. Let's assume that you are in your residence, and that there is a party going on next door, and it's 11 o'clock at night, and you can hear the music, and you can hear the neighbors in your bedroom as you're trying to go to sleep. Under the current noise ordinance, you would call 911, a police officer would get dispatched, the police officer would meet you at your front door, and he would be required to come into your home, to go to the room closest to the sound, to make sure that all the doors and windows were closed, and he would have to stand there, he or she would have to stand there and measure with a noise meter four feet from the wall closest to the sound, and determine whether the decibel level was over 75 dB. You can see why we don't get a lot of charges and convictions under this ordinance. Under the proposed ordinance, it would be a violation if that same noise was simply audible from inside the enclosed structure, or after 10 o'clock from a distance of 50 feet away. So if the officer shows up, gets the lay of the land, walks out to a point 50 yards distant from that property line, and he can still hear it, it's a violation. And he can go try to seek voluntary compliance, and if he can't, he can write the civil citation at that moment. And that's another key point here. We'll talk about the difference between criminal and civil. If the violation under this new proposed ordinance is a violation of the plainly audible standard, then that's gonna be a civil violation. But if, but we felt like, if you had a situation where you had somebody who said, look, I can afford $500 a week as a cost of doing business if I'm selling, if I'm attracting enough people and selling enough $16 drinks, you know, I'm perfectly happy just to keep paying the $500. We felt like we still needed an opportunity to have a criminal penalty. And so, that criminal penalty, we've kept the decibel level restrictions that were in the old ordinance in this ordinance. And so, you can charge somebody for violating the decibel limits, if in fact you can get the evidence to prove that. And then, that is a criminal violation. Under the current ordinance, a first offense is a class-two misdemeanor, which is punishable by, I'm sorry, it's a class-three, which is punishable by a fine of $500. And a second or subsequent offense is a class-two misdemeanor, which is a $1,000 fine or up to six months in jail. What we are proposing... I'm missing a slide there. What we are proposing under the new ordinance is a civil penalty for a first offense of $250 fine, and for a second or subsequent offense, it would be a $500 fine. If there is a criminal violation, which can either be sound over and above the decibel threshold established in the ordinance, that first offense would be a class-two, and a second offense would be a class-one. Because again, we've reserved those criminal charges for more serious and repeat offenses. So, that is, that is the hybrid. Now, I think there was a slide that I had that somehow didn't make it onto the PowerPoint. But where we are at this point is, this is the ordinance that we have shared with the liaisons, and the liaisons have asked us to share with you. They, I'm sure, have their own thoughts and comments, which I hope that they will share with you. We are prepared to move forward with this draft ordinance as directed by the council. I will tell you that although we have put in a fair amount of work on this ordinance, this ordinance has a number of moving pieces. And even after we adopt, even after you adopt this amendment, I think it will probably likely over time, based on experience, to come back and make further modifications and amendments. This issue, frankly, going back to 2009, when I was involved in litigation and in crafting that ordinance, I would've told you at any time up to about four years ago, when another issue whose initials I will not mention came along, that this was one of the most vexing issues for any city or city attorney's office. So, I'm not telling you this is a panacea. I'm not telling you this will fix everything, but I do think it moves us along the trail. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and take your direction on how you would like us to proceed, if you would, with these amendments.
Rosemary and Guy, and then Rocky.
Mark, thank you. I know you're always very cautious and careful in what you bring before us. Thank you for working so hard on this. So, down where I live in my district, I've been getting, I get a lot of complaints about the street noise. In fact, when the city manager came out to Pacific South, they were complaining about the General Booth Bridge. Motorcycles are unbelievably loud, and a lot of the trucks are incredibly loud. And I'm, so, a lot of people are complaining, and I'm out there when I'm walking and all that, and trying to talk on the phone. You can barely hear yourself think. They get to be so loud. And for the, for the people, especially Pacific South, with that bridge, you know, it's all during the night, too. And it disturbs their sleeping and all that sort of thing. So, it sounds like this is mostly addressing indoor noise?
Well, it does have a provision in 2366, which addresses vehicle noise, but it primarily addresses vehicle noise in the context of modified exhaust systems. And so, it doesn't really give you much more protection for that than the existing state code provisions, which outlaw those, those types of exhaust systems, which are typically loud. It does address, like, car stereos and that kind of thing, but operational noise from motorcycles and trucks, it doesn't necessarily address very well.
And, I mean, they are really, really loud. It's not just, and there's some that are operating just fine, like any other normal vehicles, but some of them are just extraordinary. So is there anything that, and how do you enforce that?
Well, a mobile, a mobile sound source is difficult to enforce, because it's difficult to get somebody there in time. I don't really have what is probably a satisfactory answer for that. I don't think anybody else does either. I think all we can do in those situations is call the police and have the police check to determine, if they can catch the vehicle and check to determine whether the vehicle has a legal exhaust system or not.
But in some, there is a lot of law enforcement down in that area of the city, too.
Right. Right.
Anyway, I just wanted to raise that, 'cause I get a lot of complaints, and I know, Mr. DeHane, you heard them that night from Pacific South. But there's other buildings, and there are people that are residents that live there full-time. And we've also had letters from tourists that have said, it was so loud, I'm not coming back. So I've seen letters like that, too. So it's...
We can look some more at that, but I, we have thought some about that, and we really don't have a good answer for it.
Thank you so much for all your efforts.
Guy and Rocky.
Thank you. Let me, let me address, before I get to my questions, Ms. Wilson's comments. I've just, I've just come back from 10 days or so out of the country, and in a large city that's got lots and lots of motorcycles and trucks. And at rush hour, it's loud. But it's loud because of the volume of the, the total sum volume of the traffic. It's not loud because there's a single vehicle that is loud, so loud you can't hear yourself think. We've got a real problem. Am I correct that part of the problem we have now is that we can't stop vehicles for some of these noise violations alone? There has to be other traffic violations involved before you can make a stop?
Well, there was a state law changed in the General Assembly. I think it was this session that, that limited the ability of police to make stops exclusively for defective exhaust equipment. That's a secondary offense. I believe there still is a second Virginia code provision that will allow a stop, but I would, I would defer to Jessica for that. Am I right about that? I believe it's the section that we cross-referenced in this ordinance. So I think you can still make a stop for, if you have probable cause to believe that the system is not as required by the motor vehicle code.
Well, I've certainly gotten the, I've heard with my own ears, and I've gotten complaints, most recently from residents on 22nd Street, about vehicles exiting the beach. I don't know that I've passed those on directly to the police or to the city manager, but we've got a noise problem with moving vehicles, and I don't wanna bog this down, because this really emerged out of more problems with stationary noise in commercial establishments, and the busking issue of very loud amplified music on the boardwalk and otherwise. So, I just wanna acknowledge, I think Ms. Wilson is absolutely right. We have a serious problem with, and I don't know that we're any more exposed to it than any other city is. Other cities have residential areas that also operate as entrances and exits to neighborhoods and are, and throughways through neighborhoods. But certainly in terms, if any legislative fixes are necessary, I hope we're starting sooner rather than later to look at that and get with other cities that may have similar problems. Because I consider it to be a major, a major problem for our residents and for our visitors. Turning back to the ordinance at hand, I also wanna thank you, Mr. Niles, and your department, and the other departments, police, city manager's office, and others that have participated in this. This is not the highest priority on anybody's list, but I think in terms of quality of life, it really is one of the things that, as far as residents go, if you ask them, if they're exposed to it, it is important, and I think we do, we have to elevate it to, over what you might say, well, it's a little noise, and we live in a resort. I don't think that's the answer that we can continue to give, or that the old ordinance doesn't work. We need a new ordinance, and I'm very grateful that we've got one in front of us that I hope will work. I know our police are overextended. I know they're shorthanded, but I've spoken with Sergeant Ball, with Captain McBrien, with others about this issue, and I think they take it seriously as well, and are willing to do what they can, within reason, to help us get this through. I, too, would not claim this is a perfect ordinance, or that, and welcome the input of other council members and questions about it, but I think this is a great start, and I appreciate the effort you guys have put into it. Thanks.
Thank you, Rocky, and then Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Attorney, back, the situation we had back on Jasmine Court, back in, I think it was September of last year, this will help address that reference showing up. The police showed up there many times and asked them to quit. Now, if, if those folks there, the residents that were making the noise, if they would've got the three, let's say they'd have got convicted on the three criminal class-two misdemeanors, would that have been a felony for that? That homeowner at that point, off of this?
No. There's no, there's no provision, we don't, as a, as a local governing body, have the ability to enforce felonies.
Yeah.
Class-one misdemeanor is as high as we can go. But we would've, we probably would've started out with the, with the civil penalties, because the sound, as I recall the facts, was audible in the adjoining property owner's home. And so, we probably would've started with the civil penalty citations, and then could've moved up if the decibel readings justified it to criminal violations. This ordinance would make those criminal violations, if charged and proven, higher. Before, as I said, it was three for a first offense, two for a second. Now it would be two and one, both of which carry jail time. So it has potentially carries jail time. So it would have some increased, at least potential, impact.
Yeah. Okay. And, and my next question is on line 207, reference animals. Now, when I read this, I thought it was interesting. Is there some type of industry standard that says, if an animal yelps, or barks, or tweets for once a minute for 20 consecutive minutes? I mean, what's the methodology to come up with that? I think the poor animal would be passed out by the time they got done barking for 20 minutes.
I'm not so certain about that.
You don't know my dog.
I was gonna say.
I believe this provision was borrowed from another jurisdiction that had that provision. We could, we can, you know, any of this is subject to change. I, if, if 20 consecutive minutes is too long, then we could make it some shorter number.
Well, you know, and I don't know if it's too long or too short. If, if the, if the homeowner left Fluffy at home, and it, and then it barked that long, then maybe this is, they had no control of Fluffy being gone. I don't know. I just didn't know the methodology for getting once a minute for 20 consecutive minutes.
I just don't wanna be the officer counting and having to wait.
That's right. That's right.
And my dog's not named Fluffy.
Well, well, in practice, what happens there is the officer goes and talks to the owner and says, look, this is a problem, and can you please address it? And then he goes and sits outside for 20 minutes, and if it doesn't stop, then he goes back in and gives a citation. I mean, that's practically how it's gonna happen.
All right.
But, you know, you've gotta, you've gotta put words to paper to get some sort of standard. And again, I'm not promising you we got all these right. I'm hoping we got them close, but, but we may need to tweak some of them.
Good. Aaron, and then John.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mark, and Councilman Moss, and Councilman Tower for working on this. As you know, with everything we do, we always try to solve one issue, but somehow, sometimes we can create another. So, just as a precaution with this ordinance, is there a way that we can track the application of this ordinance, keeping track of the data, to see how it's being applied? So that way, we don't, there may be disparities of things we may create by, you know, maybe a younger couple, or the family moves into a neighborhood that's been historically quiet, and, and their owners have been there quite some time, may not like the young kids running around. I just wanna make sure whenever we implement a new ordinance or type of legislation, we're always aware of the kind of adverse reactions that it may get. So is there a way that we can track that?
Well, that's probably an answer, a question more for the manager than for me, but I will tell you that I believe that we currently do track under our current ordinance, and so I would anticipate that we would be able to track and keep that kind of data for this new ordinance as well.
Great. My next question is, is the applications, Councilman, Vice Mayor Wilson talked about the oceanfront, and the oceanfront is loud. I mean, it is loud. And so, my concern is, how do you apply this, this type of ordinance when we have contracted, you know, noise or, or people singing on the oceanfront? How do you differentiate between one and the other?
The special events permit.
Yeah. I mean, if it's an organized event that's subject to a special events permit, the permit will specifically call out exception to the provisions of this ordinance. If you don't have a special events permit, and remember, you're supposed to get a special events permit if you're using a, a sound amplifier, or if you're expecting over a certain number of people to be present.
Well, I guess my, my concern is, is the cars, traffic on the oceanfront. So if the cars are bumping loud music, and you have a special permit person singing or right next to it... or right next to it, how do you differentiate between how that?
Well, if you can't differentiate, you don't have, you, you can't bring a charge. You have to be able to identify the source of the sound. And that sound has to be what's plainly audible at the appropriate distance during the appropriate time or inside a residential dwelling. If you cannot differentiate between the music coming from the F-250, and I only use that because that's what I drive, and, and, and the person on the street, then you can't cite anyone.
Okay. And so then, you know, because where I live at, there's this zone, there's this, this car wash. And I mean, summer's coming around pretty soon and a lot of cars like to meet up. And the neighbors have complained numerous times. I forward those complaints to the city manager as well. But we've been very limited in what we can do far as enforcement. But the, the sound from cars, the gathering, as well as the motorcycles with the straight exhaust, would this help in that aspect? I also have a neighbor at random times at 2:00 AM in the morning fire off fireworks. And we haven't seen the catch this guy yet or this person who it is. But is this ordinance supposed to help alleviate some of those?
Well, this ordinance does specifically address fireworks. And it, and it specifically says if you put off fireworks and they're audible inside another person's dwelling or at a distance of fifty feet, it's violation. Now, of course, it's also a violation of the no fireworks rule.
I was gonna say.
So there's probably going to be a couple of, this is probably going to be the secondary enforcement measure, but yes, it, it, there is a provision for that. And, you know, if you'd asked me in 2009, was that ordinance going to make it better? Well, actually, I would have told you I didn't think so because I think I kind of saw the problems with this. And that's why we defended the old ordinance all the way to the Virginia Supreme Court. And I think we even tried to get cert to the United States Supreme Court if I remember correctly. I, I do think this will help. Again, I don't think it's going to fix everything. And I think there will have to be revisions made. But I think what we, what I would suggest to you is adopting this, making any changes that council sees now, but getting this adopted and giving us some experience with enforcing it will tell us where we need to look to, to make further improvements on out in the future.
So this, so the, the meetup at the car wash, this was, you know, I mean, there's twenty, thirty, forty cars sometimes and it can go well into midnight and beyond. And I've heard from my neighbors, will this ordinance, ordinance help alleviate that?
It, it should because if that sound is audible inside another person's dwelling or more than, at that time of night, it, it would be at, at a distance of fifty feet. And yes, a, a citation can be, can be issued. And again, I think changing it to a, a civil penalty makes the likelihood of a successful prosecution greater. And I think that is your, is, will it help with deterrence?
And so my, my last point is when it comes to prosecution and if officer shows up to a, a place of residence or business and it's, it's loud ordinance, how, how will that person, the officer mark, you know, fifty feet away, you know, when you go to prosecute? And, and how is the, a human ear, you know, my mother can barely hear ten feet away. So how can, you know, if, if an officer's hearing, would that be come under scrutiny?
Well, that'll be, that'll be, both of those questions will be questions of proof for the trial. The officer will have to have a way to demonstrate that he's, that, that the distance was fifty feet or greater, whether he goes out and, and, and has a, a tape measure in his vehicle or through some other source. And then it's just a question of testimony and credibility. I was able, here's where I was, here's where the noise source was, the distance was this. It was, it was plainly audible. I could hear this, this, this and this. I verified by walking over that this was the source of what I was hearing, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm sure that the police will do training bulletins and, and have protocols just like they do for every other offense that they prosecute on how to, to prove and document those violations to enhance the ability to obtain a favorable ruling in court.
And my, my last question, Mr. Mayor. Fifty feet away. And I'm, I'm asking this question because obviously summertime is right around the corner here and there, I imagine there'd be a lot of outdoor activities. And sound tends to carry a lot more, you know, someone's typical backyard. If the, if the neighborhood is typically quiet and there, and there's one house that's having an event and the music's not loud, but yet you can hear it down the street, how is, how do you apply the ordinance?
The ordinance is still fifty feet.
You, you understand what I'm saying? If, if it's dead quiet and I'm just talking using my regular voice, but you can hear me down the hall and my, because my voice may carry that?
A, a, after eleven o'clock at night, it would be fifty feet. Before that, it would be a hundred feet. So.
So, so if you live in a quiet neighborhood, right, it's typically quiet and you have family come over and you're just outdoors, music not loud, you're just having a good time, it's not loud, it's not, you know, blaring anything, and your neighbors can hear it fifty feet away.
Well, I think the real question is, I mean, I don't think they're gonna.
Like the neighbors.
Yeah.
I, I, I think if, I think if the neighbor can hear it in their house, that's when they're going to call.
Sure.
But, but, but the standard is inside an enclosed dwelling or after a certain time period, I believe it's ten o'clock, at a distance of fifty feet or more. And that's, that's dealing primarily with, if you look on page, well, we don't have page numbers, but if you look starting like line 143, that deals with TVs, radio and music. So sources of amplified sound. That's, you know, inside another's dwelling or at a distance of a hundred feet during daytime hours, fifty feet at nighttime. The next one, loudspeakers, public address systems, that's only at night, but because it's at night, it's in another dwelling, inside a dwelling or fifty feet. Vehicle horn signaling devices, et cetera. The one that's closest to what you're talking about is G in line 184 yelling, shouting, et cetera, or singing between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, such that it's plainly audible inside an enclosed dwelling unit or at fifty feet from the source of the sound. So, you know, if you want to sing in your outdoor shower, you just need to keep it down so you're not audible more than fifty feet.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you, Mark.
Well, first of all, I did a Councilman Guy's remarks and really it's, the staff delivers much more credit than we do. I think we nibbled around the edges and, and I think he's right. You did address my last part of my question was about, because I got, took that away from that geocaching warrant decision that I read, and thank you so much for that, was about the desk guides for the people who aren't police officers. Because I, one of the things I, I've taken away reading the court cases you have provided me is what is the evidence that the people that are doing that are more than just Johnny up the street and in fact that there was some kind of training, there was some kind of stuff and that is essential to conviction? So I guess we're going to have desk guides for the non, the supporting staff and the police will do the normal thing. But is this a fine that people can pay? Or is this like when you have a speed zone in a neighborhood and they get a ticket and one of those, they have to appear in court? Is this a must appear in court?
No, sir. This.
Because time is people's most valuable resource. And if you're trying to get someone's attention, having to come to court and pay is very convincing.
Well, I, I, I don't disagree with anything you just said, but as currently written, that's 2367, starting at line 220. I'm sorry, that's wrong. It's 23.
Well, not to say it should change, but maybe the second offense is the time when they should have to show. You know, maybe that's, I mean, everybody can have something to say, oh man, that's inconvenient time. But I don't know that on second offense, and I hope we never have any. But if we did, having to actually appear versus just stroke a check, kind of up the ante and getting people's attention that, you know, you are, you are creating, if you're a nuisance in the community. With regards to vehicles, I don't know what the right answer is, but there is well-established technology that can measure sound and with sonar measure distance and do all those computations. That's not an unknown science. So, and it may not be a Virginia Beach only issue. This might be a great issue for the Hanthor Road regional folks or maybe even larger at the state to go out to our larger land grant university, which has an acoustic and has all sorts of stuff they do for our fine men and women in uniform and figure out, is there, is there a technology solution to this stationary and just takes your picture, takes your license plates and like the red light camera can make those determinations and you just get that ticket? I don't know if that's the right answer. I know we don't have it today, but that's certainly a, an engineering problem versus a basic research problem. And I would think that some of our universities would be glad to join in on that.
Well, to, to address, Mr. Moss, your, your first question, in, in section 2369, as it's currently written, a person can receive the notice of civil violation and mail in the payment in prepay. What we've tried to do, we've also provided that an officer may give written notice to cease and desist. And if there is a repeat violation after that, then that puts you over from the, from the civil into the criminal side. So that's how we attempted to deal with the concern that you raised.
Well, I would just like to let this adopt, move it on as it is with some other mind. But to keep that in the back of our minds is to see what the data suggests. And if there's not an issue of repeating people, then there's no need for a solution. But in the fact, if there is, then maybe having people go to court on the second and have to appear in person might be the right answer. But no need to use a shotgun where a BB gun will work.
Okay, good. Thank you ver, yeah, one more.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first I want to thank the committee and my two colleagues on the council. I think when council teams up with staff, it expedites a process. And I think this is a great product. Having attended civic league meetings at the oceanfront and business meetings, we do have a number of issues with noise. I think this is a, an excellent ordinance. I like the fact that not only the police, but others can, selected by the city manager can help to enforce that. And I agree, the civil penalties are the way to go. And I hope we can adopt this soon. And then we'll look at if we need to make modifications, tweaks or whatever. But I think this is an excellent start here and I want to thank everybody involved.
Yeah, thank you all. Yeah, let's go ahead and bring it forward and get it done. And, you know, what do you think? Bring it forward as we're ready to move.
We need a public hearing first. I do believe.
Yeah.
I mean, unless people check.
Yeah, we, but once we get it at least, you know, the draft, you know, the draft out and everything, get it scheduled, then we can draft.
I, I would propose to have the draft put up on VB.gov and so that, so that it's out there for people to actually read because the nuts and bolts are kind of important. And then we can have it on either just for public comment or public comment and a vote as early as June 7th. Just council needs to tell us what you'd like.
Maybe a public comment first and then a separate vote. What's your thoughts?
I would yield to my colleagues who live at the oceanfront as to whether or not they think the case we can make with the public, that because of the season starting and the ability to act sooner than later, we, I won't call it an emergency, but call it expedient. And then knowing that if we get a lot of public feedback on the night of it, we can, we'll take up those corrections and then amend the ordinance. But I got the impression from the people out there that that was something that they needed sooner than later. That was my gut, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do that. Let's, we'll have it then, you know, separate vote, okay? At this point, okay.
I was just saying, Mr. Branch and I were talking, I, I think there is a resort advisory commission meeting between now and the seventh. We could certainly get, get it to, to those folks so they could take a look at it. I'd like to go on and proceed on the schedule that Mr. Stiles suggested.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
So, public comment and vote on the seventh unless you all, based on how, what you hear is different. Yes, sir?
Okay. You got it. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dhaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Livia Colantino, who's now our acting purchasing manager, provides you an update on our SWAM progress to date.
Welcome, it's good to see you again.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Wilson and members of city council. Thank you so much for having me here today to present our report on the annual spend or city contracting with minority women and service disabled veteran owned businesses. This is, this report is the first report we've given since you adopted the ordinances as part of the disparity study. So I do want to make note of that. And this is for fiscal year 2021. The first slide you see here is the overall minority and woman owned business awards when the city contracting. As you can see, total awards was $310 million with $30 million to minority owned businesses, $36 million to woman owned businesses, with an overall award combined to women and minority owned businesses at $67 million. In a side by side comparison, FY20, the awards totaled $245 million. And as you can see with minority owned businesses, there was a $14.9 million. And woman owned businesses, $25.5 million for a total award of $40 million in FY20. So you can see with the side by side comparison, we've done significantly better in FY21. And if we look at that according to percentages, there was 6.1 million in FY20 and now we're at 9.9 mil, I'm, 6.1% and then 9.9% when we look at those numbers in that side by side comparison there with the awards to minority and woman owned businesses. And in FY20, you can see the difference there. Our next slide is related to the spend amounts. As we know, awards are what we awarded and then the spend is what we actually write the check for in, in most cases. Well, it is in all cases. So when we look at FY21, there was $227 million that we spent with $22.9 million to minority owned businesses, $29 million to woman owned businesses for an overall of $52 million combined to minority and woman owned businesses. In the side by side comparison in FY20, which totaled $372 million, there was a slight decrease in the minority owned spend for a fiscal year 2021. And that's due to the timeframe that the contract is awarded as far, as well as when the project starts and then when we start actually spending on those and the completion dates.
And I think Livia, it's also, it's also probably, and we're not 100% certain of this too, but fiscal year 21 was also the COVID spend reductions as well, you know, so that could be some of the reasons why our spend dollars are down as well.
Absolutely. The COVID, the, the impact of COVID-19 as well.
I have one question while you're here. Would we have had, by chance, this would include money being spent appropriated numerous years for CIP projects as well? So I'd just be interested to know, was there a lot more CIP project expenditures in FY20 that we didn't have in 21? That would just, as a control, because I thought that included prior appropriated year money.
Thank you, John.
But when we look at the spend based on percentages, you can see that the, the spend data for the, for minority owned businesses increased from 6.6% to 10.1%. And the increase to woman owned businesses was from 7.3% to 12.8%. And then when we look at overall awards with the 245, these are prime contract awards. And the awards in this area in FY21 are $245 million and that's of the $310 million. So these are the prime contract awards where you see 20 million went to minority owned businesses, 24 million to woman owned businesses for a combined total of $44 million. The percentages for minority owned businesses in awards was 8.2% and for woman owned businesses, 10%. And then the spend in that category for these prime contract awards were for minority and woman owned businesses resulted, there's a similar trend here where you see 8.3 or 15.6% for minority owned businesses and 10.2% or $19.2 million for woman owned businesses for combined spend of $34 million in FY21. As we look at the subcontracting, in the area of subcontracting, total awards was $64 million and the total spend was $39 million. When we look at the subcontracting, again, this is the first full year that we've reported since you have adopted the ordinances in support of the disparity study. So that was, it went into effect in July. So that was, it went into effect in July 2020. Since the adoption of these ordinances, we have seen an increase in the participation of minority owned businesses in subcontracting. When we look at minority owned business and woman owned business awards according to the contract type, we have the contract types broken down by goods and services, professional services, architectural and engineering services and construction. And as you can see, there is a significant increase. We do have the variances here on the side. There is increase along, across the board with all of these as it relates to the total awards and spend data with minority owned businesses and woman owned businesses. And then we break it down and we look at just the MBE awards and spend with the side by side comparison again for FY '21 and FY '20. Again, we can see significant increase in most areas except that one area, the total spend there. But if you look, you can see where our goods and services area for minority owned businesses do fairly well as, well as compared to FY '20 goods and services. Also in the area of construction, our minority owned businesses are doing fairly well in that area as compared to FY '20. And then when we look at woman owned businesses, we see this, a similar trend where we can see woman owned businesses do very well in goods and services as well as in the construction Then we, when we look at race and ethnicity with our spend in FY '21, and we will compare FY '20 as well, we can see the differences here where we, our percentages and our numbers look very, very good. You can see 18% in the black Americans, Hispanic Americans at 9.6% and Asian Americans at 17.8%. And when we look at FY '20, you can see a significant increase in the areas, in those same ethnicity, in those areas. And I do want to point out Asian Americans, if you can see, is 17.3 in FY '20 and black American and Hispanic American had a ve, a much lower percentage when it came to the And we see the same trend with the spend amounts as well. You can see black American at 23.7%, Hispanic American at 2.7% and Asian American at 17.5. And this is FY '21. And then when we look at FY '20, you can see the significant difference there as well. Then we did a three year trend. The three year trend is from FY '19 to FY '20, '21. And if you look at the awards by dollars, and this is combined, minority and woman owned businesses combined, for the award dollars, you can see 67 million in FY '21 and at 21.8%. And you can see the, the increase, we are trending upward in a positive note. And then you can see on the spend dollars, the same thing. We have a upward trend from FY '19 to FY '21. And then we look at service disabled veteran. We, we take service disabled veteran, they're already in the woman and minority owned business categories, but they're self-reported or self-classified. So we kind of take their numbers out. And this is where, when a company is only service disabled veteran, they claim to be that, but they're not certified as that. This is the numbers that we get from there. And it is the same kind of, we see in comparison to FY '21, that it's similar, very similar in the awards and spend data. And then as a summation, so post disparity study, the aspirational goal for minority owned businesses is at 12.9%. And that's a total spend of sitting, of city contracting dollars. If you look at the percentages that we've gone through over FY '19, '20 and '21, you can see that trend upward as well there. And then post disparity study for aspirational goal for the woman owned businesses is at 13.3%. And as noted, there's an upward trend from 5.4% to 12.8% in FY '21. And I would like to note that prior to the disparity study, our minority owned business percentage there, the aspirational goal was 10%. And that was in, prior to the disparity study. And as you can see, we've already beat that in FY '21. I think I went, I have one more slide. Okay. Didn't make it in there. But in conclusion, what I would like to say is, thank you so much for the opportunity to present. Thank you for supporting minority businesses, woman owned businesses and, and city contracting. And the adoption of the ordinances that you adopted back in 2020, they have proven to, to yield results. And so with that, I'd like to thank you and, and if you have any questions, I can answer your question.
Okay, before questions, I just want to thank you, Laverre. I do have to step out to make a couple of conference calls, so I'm passing this on. But if I could just make a comment, please, thank you so much. You personally have brought a lot to the table, you know, Taylor Adams, prior to, you know, it took a lot of hard work to get here. And, you know, I think what we're doing is shaping the attitude. We are the city of yes, of an inclusion. And I think the numbers are trending well. And when we have a level playing field for everybody where they feel welcome and we give them the opportunity, I think the opening of the Hive is going to be a tremendous boom. And I tell you what, you're helping to make our future very bright. So if you don't mind, but I will be back, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't agree more with your comments. Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. I just want to start off by commending you, Laverre, as well as your entire staff in the SWAM Business Office and Purchasing, as well as Taylor Adams and our city manager, Patrick Duhany here. You know, the numbers are trending upwards and in large part because of the work the Minority Business Council, you all do in collaboration and partnership. I think coming on board and really seeing how you all are taking this disparity studies and really pushing aspirational goals higher, but also doing a great job of letting the minority business community know what's available out there, what the procurement process. Which leads me to the very important work you all do with the Small Business Institute and as well as collaboration with the Hive, our SWAM Business Office. And so, you know, for those folks at home that may not know, you know, the Minority Business Council in collaboration with the SWAM Business Office, they provide a variety of trainings, workshops and networking, events to inform, to inform businesses of the city ordinances and the procurement programs. Also, the Small Business Institute continues to provide businesses with growth and development training, which is offered two times a year if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Here in my notes. And also collaborations by economic development and offers to growth activities programs which provide business owners with 101 consulting with a certified business consultant and the opportunity to expand their businesses across the public and private sector. And I think it's important to note that the only, the only recommendations from the 2018 disparity study that was not implemented, only was the certification program because it's a duplication of the state's program, which is a thorough process in itself. And so, again, my, my hats off has been a pleasure to be your liaison as well, also having Rod there guide us along the way, making sure we have quorum. But also, again, I just think the numbers are trending upwards and it's a testament to this body, again, for our commitment to small businesses and minority businesses throughout our city and our continuously, and I continue to look forward to working alongside the NBC, as well as you, Laverre, and our economic development office. So thank you for your, your work and your, your commitment.
Thank you.
My, my, one question I do have is that, is for the financial system, how is, is that working as it should to notify businesses of the opportunities that may be out there?
We are still working on that. It does notify the business. They do have to access the system, so they have to actually log into the system. It does not notify them outside of the system.
Okay. So once they log in the system, they're.
They, they have access to all the solicitations that are out there.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. John?
If we could, I know this wasn't in our package, so I'm not going to ask all the questions because I haven't had a chance to study it, but I do have a few. But can we get a copy, please, hard copy?
Of the PowerPoint.
Yeah, in the, in the future, if we could get the briefings in advance, that'd be great. But could you turn to slide four?
Here we go, John.
I'm true sorry, I forgot to get that.
Yeah, but it wasn't on Friday.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I was trying to get it up on screen.
Just bear with us for a moment, if you would, please. But it was a great brief, did a great job.
Thank you.
And I probably didn't do a greater job keeping track of my notes because I was trying to make sure I was capturing what you were covering. What I'm trying to understand on this slide is the difference, is, are the awards over multiple year periods of time? Because often, and so therefore, when someone sees total spend, that doesn't mean total spend and that the, that the scope of the purchase order has been concluded, does it?
Correct. So the awards are not over a multiple year. The awards are just this one fiscal year.
One fiscal, is the spend reflect 30 September or is this the current year that we're referring to?
This is, this is FY '21. So the spin is from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Okay, well then that, so then like, that's what I'm trying to, so it's not, so what would be the reason, did we have an indefinite quantity of purchases and therefore we didn't have, and that the, the award represented our maximum possible need and the spend represents our need? I'm trying to understand.
The award, the award is not tied to spend. So award could be, we could award a contract at a certain dollar amount and we may not even spend that money until two or three years down the road.
Well, that was the point I was asking, was the scope of the award, multiple years or longer, but the answer is yes.
Yes, it could be.
So the, the spend, so when you look at spend relative to award, there's no relationship you should draw from that.
Correct.
Well, I think without some footnotes on that slide, that doesn't convey that. I just, that's all I would suggest.
I would articulate, I think the program is based on spend, but we do, we do show award as well because that is a, a good component of, well, to see the, the possible, the spend capabilities of a particular contract.
I totally agree the slide is right. It just needs a footnote on what award means in my, could you go to slide five? I was paying attention. Now, and I got that answered, it worked both places. Could, if you could, slide six, this was a question about, because that was the same question on the slides. I noticed that when you look at the big difference, it's almost like the change in construction is a big difference. So I assume that is a, a big period of multiple there. But if you just look at the awards though and spend, and maybe it's because time and it's, I'm drawing the wrong conclusion, but if you look at the growth, I'm just curious how the change in removing the bonding requirement, which usually goes with construction, and how has removal of that requirement, which was one of our legislative proposals, you may recall, that got approved, has that really the cause of that growth? How much has removing that bonding requirement increased participation for construction?
It has increased participation in the construction area. But that bonding requirements, requirement is for projects between 100,000 and 500,000. It alleviates those, the bonding for those projects.
Right. And I guess the question is, how many of those construction projects fall within that framework?
For FY '21, I believe we had five of those bond waiver projects.
Oh, interesting. And I think there was a slide where you were showing Hispanic participation in this program. And I just, my minute, if you look at, now there was another one that was a lower number than that. I think there was another, was that here? This was in '20.
That, this is the award. It could have been, was it the spin?
Yeah, well, if you look at Hispanic, but if you look at the voting litigation we've been involved in, if you look at our 2020 census, clearly the Hispanic community has grown as a much larger percentage of our population than that would reflect. So I would just, and I'm not saying, and I don't know the reason, not saying there's anything wrong here, I'm just suggesting that's probably something worth of, is our outreach to our small business Hispanic community what it needs to be? Do we have the right, reach out to that group? They have, sometimes they have a little bit different issues and barriers to communication.
Can I, can I answer that?
Yeah, feel me finish, Laverre. But I just noticed that that, because I'm, I'm always looking at the census data and that litigation that we went through and what proportion of our population they are and that just, that's an underperforming category that draws attention.
I'll say, in, in response to that, the, the NBC Chair Ogurtorres has, has done a great job of building that, that, those bridges as far as there was some communication barriers, language barriers that presented that. So she's, she's done a great job along with the Minority Business Council of really informing that community of what opportunities there are out there to really partner with the city. So I think that has a, that plays a large part too as well and, and the increase in participation when it comes to those numbers.
I think it's a great story. I was just, I'm always looking at little nuanced things, patterns that are in there that some communities are underrepresented. But thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
Thank you. Barbara?
Do we know, in, in having these requirements or aspirations at this point, do we have any information about how much additional time it takes in contracting or cost overall because of the programs?
Well, we have some, with some of the ordinances that were adopted, we do, we've had a couple that we've had to rebid simply because they did not meet those SWAM requirements when they submitted their bid. But I, I believe it may have been about three that we maybe have had to rebid.
If we could, you know, kind of see whether we are having any negative impact while we're achieving the positive.
Absolutely.
And so we can balance all of that.
Okay.
Sabrina? Thank you. Good afternoon. I just wanted to find out when will this information be updated on the dashboard? I know throughout disparity study forums that I've attended and that residents have participated in, they requested the disparity study recommendations dashboard, which you all certainly worked hard on putting it together and getting it up and running. So I just wanted to know when that information would be updated.
We, we normally wait till after we present to this body, so we will update that tomorrow.
Great.
Or, or by, at least by Friday, I know. We'll get with IT and make sure that's updated.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Aaron?
Thank you. One last person I forgot to mention and, and he's a huge part of the success of the NBC in the disparity study is Laurent Smith. He goes by Jeff Smith. Mr. Jeff Smith does a, a lot in academic development to help minority participation. So I just want to make sure we acknowledge him as well.
Well, job well done, and I think this is another success story.
Thank you.
So just wondering, do we ever reach out to the schools to see if they would include, you know, what, because they, they spend a lot of money too to, to encourage minority businesses to get involved?
The schools, they report, the NBC reaches out to the schools on a, on a yearly basis and they do report their, their numbers at an NBC meeting. And we normally, they'll give us a presentation so we can make, and we take the presentation and we normally upload it. So we can make sure we, we get the presentation. I don't think they're scheduled though until like September or October.
So how are they doing with their goals?
When they capture, I don't know if they have specific goals. However, when they report on, on their SWAM numbers, it's all inclusive, so they don't break it out, I don't believe, as far as it goes to, you know, break it down like minority and, and woman owned. I think they do SWAM inclusive.
Well, they're a lot, a large part of our budget and they have a lot of, you know, schools to take care of and that sort of thing. It would be, I think it, I think they ought to join us in what we're doing, so I don't know how we encourage that.
And I don't think I have a counterpart over there in the schools, but we can definitely reach out to them.
You're welcome.
Okay. Maybe Patrick can work with Erin on that.
Yeah, I'll talk to him in our next 101.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if I could, could I just kind of thank my staff? They have, they have worked so hard. Ayusha and Nikita are back here supporting me today. And then we have Keith, who's, who's there at the Hive. And then, you know, as Councilman Rouse mentioned, none of this would be possible without, you know, Taylor leading the charge on this and then these two awesome leaders coming in here, Ms. Shelton and then Mr. Duhany. Leadership is key. They've made a difference in, in what we do and what we've been able to do. So I truly appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Job well done. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Duhany?
Yep. Vice Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, at this time, Bobby Tahan, our planning director, will give a glimpse of the next upcoming planning commission items coming to council for its consideration in a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Vice Mayor, members of city council. As the manager noted, I'm going to provide the pending planning items on the June 7th and June 21st city council meetings. On June 7th, there are seven planning items scheduled. On June 7th, there are seven planning items scheduled. The first item is by Ashton Builders, 1 LLC and District 2, formerly Prince's Hand District at 2487 North Landing Road. It's a conditional rezoning from AG1 and AG2 to conditional R 7.5. The request is to rezone 4.26 acres along North Landing Road, south of the municipal center for development of seven single-family dwellings at a density of 1.64 units per acre. The site is located in the courthouse historical and cultural district overlay and the homes that are proposed have received a certificate of appropriateness from the historical review board on March, in March of this year. The property is also within the TAITA and was reviewed for compliance to the transition area guidelines, and it appears that many of the components of the guidelines can be met with this proposal. The project was presented to the TAITA CAC on April 7th, 2022, with no objections raised due to the consistency with the design guidelines and the location of this proposed development, which is, as Ms. Henley has noted previously, kind of in the crosshairs where multiple plans come together.
I could, Vice Mayor, could you just run the write-up and we get it? If you could just provide what were the driving factors that necessitated a five-foot variance in the front?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry. I was actually just going to get ready to say that, but I will go into detail on that in the in the write-up for you for the.
Thank you.
The applicant, as Mr. Moss had noted there, they are requesting a variation from their front yard setback from 30 feet for all seven loss to 25 feet due to the to the current odd shape of the property, which is in that kind of L or Z shaped portion of the of the property. A small park of 1.53 acres is is proposed, the trail that is proffered that will encompass the stormwater management pond. And there was one speaker in opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing who noted concerns related to environmental flooding and tree removal. The Planning Commission recommended on a 10 to zero vote approval. Item number two and three are BT Holdings, 3 LLC and PDC TNFL LPIV LLC in Council District 5, formerly Prince's Hand at the southeast corner of Dam Neck and Harper's Road. This is two applications. One is a modification of proffers for an existing conditional zoning as well as a rezoning from AG1 in that conditional zoning to straight or unconditioned I1 and light industrial. The the existing property here on the side is about 24 acres, which has the existing conditional rezoning, and they are proposing to remove that conditional rezoning, which I'm missing on my notes, I apologize, which believe included a warehousing facility. The site is located in the 70 to 75 and greater than 75 noise zone and that portion of and some portion of this property are have Navy restrictive easements. As this is a as a straight rezoning to unconditional I1, there are no specific uses currently identified with the proposed use. However, the uses will be reviewed in conformance with the zoning ordinance and our agreement with the Navy as far as the proposed uses prior to the approval of any site plan. The property is located in the Special Economic Growth Area 3, South Oceana, and includes areas along Dam, which includes areas along Dam Neck that are impacted by high noise zones, accident potential zones, and Navy restrictive easements. The vision for the comp plan in this area has been in existence for over 25 years and that includes the use, the creation of employment, corporate parks, and light industrial uses consistent with the accident potential zone ordinance. Though not proffered, the applicant showed to the public a proposed layout and building elevation, which included 650,000 square foot of industrial five-story, and noted that they were using a, at the public hearing, a high-tech packaging, distribution, and storage facility. As noted, the applicant is in negotiations negotiations with the city for a development agreement for cost participation with the road that goes from Dam Neck Road to London Bridge Road, which is identified in that in the southeastern expressway and the master transportation plan. The agreement will include things such as the site plan and other landscape buffers and protections for the adjacent neighborhoods. That item will come forward as, of course, as part of a separate public hearing, which will be discussed.
Vice Mayor, if you would, I just want to make sure we mention because I know I've gotten some emails that this development will have to meet our new stormwater management standards.
That is correct.
I didn't even mention landscaping, but I think that's an important point because people have asked about that. I just want to make sure they're listening, that they hear that it does.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
One of the issues that I've become painfully aware of because of previous rezonings is that oftentimes when we do a rezoning, we attach conditions that we can't necessarily enforce or that are extremely difficult to enforce. I was over at a site this morning and, you know, I know we assured the neighbors that they would not have to worry about drainage because it would be taken care of with the development. And I'm finding out we don't have that authority necessarily in that location. And I know I've already been getting some calls about this one. And I just think going forward, anytime we're considering a use, we need to look extremely carefully at what we're assuring the neighbors we're going to be able to do for their protection. Because we can't always do what we think we want to do. I mean, we know what the noise ordinance, we've had to redo that because we've assured people that, you know, in rezonings that they wouldn't be concerned, have to be concerned about noise. Now we're finally maybe going to have a noise ordinance that'll mean something. I get it all the time with lighting. So anytime, and this one is going to be critical, because I think I told you all in earlier iterations, the first time we saw this, that these neighborhoods there had been very concerned about proposed adjoining adjoining uses that here we have one that wasn't built and so now we're having to undo and allow for something else. So there are some very fine neighborhoods out there that were constructed before the Navy decided, you know, about all the BRAC concerns and the noise and so forth. And so we do have residential neighbors next to these properties that the Navy likes to have as industrial. And and when we come up with what we're supposed to be offering to the adjoining neighbors as protections for their property, we've got to look at it very closely and make sure we can deliver what we're promising. It's just one of those things that I've learned the hard way with a lot of past rezonings. And I I think this one, we really need to be certain that we're not overpromising and thinking that we are taking care of things that we can't really take care of.
Anybody else?
There were seven speakers in opposition present at the Planning Commission public hearing noting concerns with the potential use and the unconditional rezoning as well as the operations next to the neighborhood, as have already been known. The Planning Commission recommended 10 to zero for approval. Items number four and five are Reed Enterprises, Inc. and Liberty Transmission and Auto Care, Inc. in District 2, formerly Prince's Hand at 3041 Holland Road. They are proposing a conditional use permit for automobile automobile repair garage for an automotive transition and small engine repair at the subject property. As part of these dual requests, the applicant are also requesting to rescind a previous conditional use permit for bulk storage yard that was previously approved for the site. A newly sea Liberty Transmission and Auto Care plans to operate this lighter automobile repair garage that will offer typical light automotive repair services such as oil and fluid changes and inspections. No heavy automobile automotive repairs are proposed. The property is located in the APZ 2 and the 70 to 75 noise zone and where and this use is deemed compatible. The current proposal would have a reduced average daily trip count and also is smaller in scope and size than what was previously approved for the site. So the stormwater management proposal would be consistent with our current requirements. There is no known opposition and the Planning Commission recommended 10 to zero for approval. Item number six is a short-term rental at 4,005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 108. Planning Commission on a nine to zero vote with one abstention has recommended approval for the short-term rental. The plant, the city council has approved other short-term rentals in this location. This is for a one-bedroom short-term rental at the Oceans 2 condominium. As it is a one-bedroom short-term rental, there is one parking space that is required and provided at the parking, at the parking lot that is dedicated to this condominium. Staff did receive one letter of opposition that felt that they did not want additional short-term rental operators in the complex. All right, on June 21st, there are three planning items, including one item, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance for a modification to the requirements of tattoo parlors, which was sponsored by Vice Mayor Wilson and Councilmember Berluci. Item number one is that is that zoning ordinance text amendment, which would allow by right tattoo parlors and body piercing establishments in the B2 Community Business District. The Planning Commission voted 10 to zero to recommend approval. Staff and the resolution that was provided and approved by City Council was moved forward with a proposal that only allowed tattoo parlors permitted by right in the B2 district. The amendment doesn't change any of the requirements related to Health Department regulations and maintains the conditions that we normally place on tattoo parlors per the conditional use permit. It also does not change anything that is required for tattoo parlors, which is in the city code, which deals with their health and safety requirements. Staff received two letters in support and 11 letters in opposition, all of which were existing tattoo parlors. Staff did do public outreach to to the tattoo industry, which included a mailing and an email to everybody that's applied for a conditional use permit to get their input on this process. Hannah Sabo, our zoning administrator, which I'm unsure if I've actually introduced to the council, has talked to many of those that were with the tattoo industry, and they noted concerns that dealt with potentially diluting the quality of services offered and the proliferation of tattoo parlors. Also requested them reinstitute the 600-square-foot distance requirement and were hopeful that they would be able, we'd be able to separate microblading from regular tattooing. As noted, because of the definition in the Code of Virginia, microblading is tattooing and we cannot separate them as different uses. And of course, that was not what was part of the resolution that was provided by council for direction to staff.
Excuse me, so Bobby, so we can't separate the microblading out? Is that what you're saying?
That is, that is, it is considered by the Code of Virginia to be tattooing, and so we can't separate it out as a subset. Now, there may be a different way to to approach it, but again, we were dealing with what we had in front of us, which is the change, the tattoo parlor from a conditional use to a permitted use.
So Mr. Berluci and I've had one of our legislators reach out to us that has concerns about us moving forward with this. So we probably need to discuss it some more with him, but we, I'm not sure we're going to move forward with this or not. It's not because of the 11 people who already have the business.
Well, I understand.
It's more to do with.
I'll look for the wisdom to seek forthcoming.
It's more to do with the Health Department.
Understand.
Staff did reach out to the Health Department, asking if they had concerns about the change, actually the Health Department staff, to see if there were concerns about the change and it potentially overwhelming their inspection operation.
Right.
At the time when we contacted them, they noted to us that they did not feel like they would be overwhelmed if there was an additional influx, but we stand.
And that was one of the concerns.
Well, something when that time comes, I'd like to know whether or not, because often when we say we have capacity problems, that's never a basis for turning someone down who otherwise would be legally entitled to a zoning. So I'm just careful that by complying with their request, we don't create a legal liability for ourselves. But that'll be a closed session discussion, I'm sure.
Moving to item number two is Audible Car Wash LLC in District 1, formerly Kimsville at 4577 South Plaza Trail. This request is in the Brenneman Farm Shopping Center, one of the existing out parcels. They are proposing to to develop the site with the Audible Car Wash, which is in between what the council had previously approved, which was the gas station for the Harris Teeter and the existing other out parcel, which is, I believe, an Autozone at this time. No vehicular access will be provided directly to South Plaza Trail as it is provided on the internal ring road of the Brenneman Farm Shopping Center. And the proposal meets the design criteria that was in the proffered plans for the proffers of the the conditional rezoning for the Brenneman Farm Shopping Center. The Planning Commission recommended on a 10 to zero vote for approval. Item number three is by T-Mobile in District 4, formerly Kimsville at 5642 Campus Drive. This is an after-the-fact request to modify conditions for a conditional use permit for 105-foot tall communication tower that had a previous approval by City Council in 2008 in the campus east neighborhood.
Vice Mayor, if I could, I would hope that the city, city manager, city attorney would, I'd just like to know when people, these aren't small-time operators and this after-the-fact approval. I mean, I think I'd like to know what consequences they should incur because they they know better. And so how did that happen?
Our understanding, at least what was provided to us by the applicant, is as the as T-Mobile merged with another carrier with Sprint, they obtained this, they obtained this tower. As you can see, this also includes Dominion Energy.
I want to talk about that.
Understood. And they believe, they believe that when the Dominion may have upgraded the the poles in that section, they then added additional, they didn't have to go to the city because I believed it was something with Dominion. T-Mobile themselves came in after the fact and said, well, we realize it's incorrect because they requested a zoning verification and wanted to amend the issue. So I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, Maselli.
That's not related to this particular one and put your hands over your ears.
I can hear, I just can't comment.
I understand that this new trend, these new poles, when we have the wind energy that are going to be coming in are very, very tall poles. Do we need to do anything to adjust our ordinances? But then again, it seemed to me that with one that was very controversial several years ago over in the Salem area, somewhere along the line, the federal or the standards were changed so that we really didn't have a lot of input anymore. You don't have to answer the questions today, but I'm just thinking ahead to what's going to happen when we are looking at those transmission poles and whether or not we can accommodate them or if we even have any authority now with what was changed.
Looking to that.
I do remember that, Mrs. Henley. I visited that many times, that little street back in the corner that had all that junk around it too. Remember that?
Yes.
And there was something about that the height standard had changed by the FCC and we didn't have any say, per se.
Planning Commission did recommend 10 to zero for approval of this after-the-fact modification request. Item number four is by Suite Management Franchising LLC in District 6, formerly Beach. This is for a tattoo parlor at 5550 First Colonial Road, Suite 23C in the Vibe District. Planning Commission recommended 10 to zero for approval for this proposed, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong shopping center. I apologize. This is in the Hilltop Square Shopping Center along Donna Drive near First Colonial Road. We have another application later on for that, so I apologize. This is for permanent, the application of permanent makeup. It is within an existing salon that is one of the salons where you are permitted to rent out separate suites. The applicant is proposing to, for the opportunity for each of the suites, if they have someone that rents one of the suites, to be able to use microblading in in the suites. There is no known opposite, opposition to this proposed request and Planning Commission recommends on a 10 to zero vote approval of this item. With that, that is the end of the glimpse. If there are any other questions?
Any more questions, Bobby? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Manager, is anything else?
Madam Vice Mayor, there's nothing at this time.
I do have an issue that I'd like to just, well, it's one that I mentioned during the retreat. And now that we've gotten the budget adopted, we can turn our attention to maybe some other issues. But very understandably and definitely, we have had a lot of concern about the, you know, the violence and the. know, the violence and the criminal violence resulting in deaths, and we get those reports from the police chief and what is occurring there. But I mentioned, like I say at the retreat, and, and just in noticing, the number of traffic fatalities that we are having seems to have increased. As a matter of fact, one of the television stations last week had a series about traffic deaths, and they definitely are increasing. And we seem to be accepting these as just something we have to accept, and I don't think we do. And I, I would really like some more attention to, and I think we did get a, one memo from the police chief since the retreat, you know, about this, this fact. But you know, it involves pedestrians, it involves bicyclists, it involves motorcycles, it involves crashes of, of all vehicles on the roads, and we really don't have to accept that. But one of the things that I hear a lot from people are concerns about traffic in their neighborhoods or in their areas. I'm constantly getting suggestions that maybe we need to reevaluate the, the speed limits in some sections of our roads. And I know, you know, we have, we don't set those, but there are other standards that have to be met. But are there things that, that we need to do or can do? And I know that we, we get comments from neighborhoods who say that they particularly notice traffic situations in their neighborhood that they're concerned with. We've had a lot of input from the folks down in Sandbridge on Sandpiper Road, and we've tried to adopt some of their concerns and are following through. But you know, the people who live there tend to notice things a lot and, and see particular things that they are concerned about with the traffic and so forth. And I would like for us to make this one of our issues that we investigate, because these, these crashes that lead to death and serious injury is not something that we should just say, we accept it and go on. I think we really need to look at what's occurring and see if there are things that we need to do or can do to make our, our highways safer. Because, of course, it might be the price of gas that does that for us for a while, but we shouldn't accept these, these things as just something that we have to accept and move on. I don't think we do, and I hope we can give that some attention.
Could I follow up on that, Vice Mayor? You know, a good point, and I'm, and I know Mr. Jones is well aware of this. When Baker Road was opened up to Lavender Road, I'm sure from a traffic engineering, that just looked like a wonderful idea. But in reality, it wasn't a necessity. That's a four-lane road. There could have been a T-intersection that could block stuff off of the oceanfront, and we injected a tremendous amount of traffic unnecessarily through that Aragona Village that then went to Aragona Boulevard, when in reality, it could have teed at Witch Duck Road, and people could still have gotten access. I sometimes think that, I know the bias of civil engineering is to grids, but I, you can go to St. Louis and go to college, University City, if anyone's ever been out there and noticed how many of their roads they have ended, so that those roads don't become the throughput runaround. So I, I think that's part that gets you to the speed because of how much interrupted mileage. And that, and so I'm, and I think it's more than just policy, because I don't know if you have enough police to enforce all the speeding that we see, and that certainly is an issue. But we have to be conscious of when we make choices. Did we, did we really, are the neighborhoods and the existing stakeholders that you're now injecting, did that really get the right, and did we think of the second, third order effects, and are those really desirable? And I, but I, I would, I would ditto Mrs. Henley's remarks, but I, I think that it's, it's hard to, to do 100% discipline on human behavior, and anyone who watched it, I think I read somewhere where our deaths on our interstates were at a three-year high across the country, and largely attributed to people thinking they have safer vehicles, so they drive faster. So one, one improvement leads to another behavior, and it's kind of unusual. But anyway, thank you, Vice Mayor, for the opportunity.
Okay. So anybody else want to talk about council initiatives or, or comments? Okay. Well, then, we're ready to go to closed session, and I think I just misplaced my read. Here it is. Do we have to adjourn this meeting and then? Well, I've got to read the closed session.
I don't think this was a meeting we ever called the order.
We said we had to adjourn one meeting before we could go down.
I don't know if the informal session is actually a meeting.
No, this is part of the same meeting you couldn't-
Yeah. I just need to read the closed session, and then we come back and adjourn. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Sections 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees.
Some moves. Second.
Okay. So we adjourn into closed session.